We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. I have 7:02. I don't believe we have any amendments to the agenda, correct?
I don't think so, no.
All right, so can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Did you get one of them on that, Colleen?
I think Doug was first.
Vote by Rockwell.
All right. Councilor Casares.
Aye.
Councilor Seha.
Aye.
Councilor Ecclestone.
Aye.
Councilor Lee. I'm sorry, I wasn't looking. Did you say aye? Okay. Councilor Seeny.
Aye.
Councilor Wick.
Aye.
Mayor Clevenger.
Aye.
It's a unanimous vote.
Cool. So, public comment. I see two attendees. If anybody has any public comment, you can go ahead and press the little button, raise your hand. I see Madeline. Go ahead and pull her into the room real quick.
Um, cool. Can you guys all hear me?
Yeah.
Awesome. Hi, everyone. I'm Madeline Sattler from the Cascade School District. Just checking in, saying hi. One fun and exciting update for us that we actually just announced to our parents today is that we are reopening our schools for hybrid learning starting February 17th. So kids will come in on an 8A B-day schedule. And so I just thought I'd share that with you guys because it's really exciting for us as a district. And I know for me personally, I have a lot more fun when kids are in school. So we're really excited to be able to share that information with you and with parents. And still working out a lot of the details, but more to come for sure. As we have kids in our buildings and we're going to do it safely and just really excited to have the energy of students in our school buildings again. So just excited to share that and I thought I'd let you all know.
Excellent. Thank you. That's awesome.
Thank you.
Anybody else for public comment? I see nothing, so we'll keep moving on. Consent agenda. Everybody get a chance to read through everything? Anybody have any issues, comments, concerns, any problems with anything? Sorry about that. What happens when you have dogs?
It changes up the tone and the beating a little bit. It's fine.
At least they're not fighting this time. So if nobody had any issue with the consent agenda, can I go ahead and get a motion to approve that?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
We have a second?
Taking that.
Vote by Rockwell.
Councilor Casares.
Aye.
Councilor Seha.
Aye.
Councilor Ecclestone.
Aye.
Councilor Lee.
Is your mic not working, Scott?
Yeah. Thumbs up works. Councilor Seeny.
Aye.
Councilor Wick.
Aye.
Mayor Clevenger.
Aye.
That is unanimous.
All right. No public hearing, no old business. So we'll just jump straight into it. State of the city. That's all you, Ron.
All right. I think Colleen's going to turn it over to me and I'm going to share my screen. I've got a little presentation. I thought it was a great meeting, the state of the city, to schedule the joint Planning Commission Council meeting. There's really no formal agenda, but I think it's a, you know, a good reflection on kind of what we've been doing and what we plan to do. Is a great meeting to get everybody on board together, so. So I'll just start with this. Typically, the state of the city, I kind of go through some of the accomplishments for the year, just so council can see an accumulation of those accomplishments. You know, one of the things we tend to do as a city is we check the box on something and then, and then we move on. You know, we're on to the next item and we're planning for the next 10 items. And so I think it's a good opportunity oftentimes this time of the year to see a culmination of some of that work. So some slides I will talk in detail from others. I'm just gonna kind of over real quickly. These are just some of the things accumulated within our goals that we've done. But I'll talk about some of these in details. We go down the list a little bit. But this is just gives you an idea that, you know, there's actually been quite a little bit done throughout the year. In the way of grants this year, we've received several grants in total over $170,000. One of the largest grants that we were able to get was the COVID relief funds, which was a great grant and that money didn't just materialize. There was a lot of, there was a lot of lobbying by various people throughout the cities and county and state to get that money. And then once it came to the state, there was a lot of lobbying to get that money transferred through the emergency operations board or planning board down to the cities. That wasn't what that money was intended, really intended to go to, but there was conversations that we were able to get that money through, through that grant. Community prosperity grant from the county was another good one. And then we were able to get a business Oregon grant to help pay for the mixing zone study for our wastewater master plan and that paid about half of it. So around $170,000. One of the things, you know, we do try to get grants. Our success rate is probably about, you know, the, what an average city has for an access rate, success rate, which is really about one in 12 grants that we work on. We spend quite a little bit of time on grants and we do get some. We are successful, but it is, it is a bit of an effort. So our goals right now, we have five main topic goals. And then under those goals, just for those new folks that join the planning commission, we have some objective goals and the objective goals are usually a little bit more specific. But just about anything that the city does or can do really relates to one of these five goals in one form or another. But our goal one, which is to provide and maintain facilities and infrastructure to support our operations and growth. We did upgrade the audio video equipment in the community center. We're actually still going through further upgrades. We've upgraded it a couple of times. But as money became available, we were able to upgrade the equipment even more. So a lot of it was done internally by staff and with some of the COVID relief funds, we were able to contract that out to a, to a company to help upgrade that. So if you go into the community center, you'll see that, you know, we've done some remodeling in there. There's a couple of big screens for easy viewing of presentations and agendas and things of that nature. Once we return to in-person meetings. And we're also set up to video meetings and load those into our YouTube channel. I-Wave was a system that we put in. It's a ventilation scrubber. We put that into all the city facilities to help protect our staff during the time of COVID. It's not a bad thing to have. You know, we, we often kind of played tag team on different illnesses throughout the year. And so it's probably not that bad to have in the future. We did purchase that Ventrack hillside mower this year. That was about a $50,000 purchase. And, you know, just the way that we changed our budgeting a few years ago, that kind of popped up. It was a need. You know, the old equipment virtually died on us and we were able to switch some funds over and do that fairly easy. Big project we're working on right now is the wastewater master plan. As you know, that's something that we have to complete as part of our MOA with DEQ. We have received some grants and we are working with DEQ regularly. They have to write our new discharge permit. And so we're in negotiations with them on that discharge permit. I might speak to that a little bit more later. Completed the mixing zone study in Beaver Creek. I'll speak to some more added to that later. We did complete an energy audit through Pacific Power this year. You know, the city's accumulated energy bills are quite high. You know, it's like $15,000 to $20,000 a month between the, you know, pumps, the well pumps, the pumps out at the aeration, out at the wastewater plant. Pretty, so we went through an energy audit looking for ways where we could save money. And there are pumps that we can replace, that they have new energy efficient pumps. And there are some grants out there. We actually just applied for one and got one to change out one of our well pumps. And, and they do save the city quite a little bit of money. So we looked at, we looked at our operations citywide and now we're making some of those changes. Then installed the wall, the glass wall lobby in City Hall. That was really a vital installation in order to be able to get our city hall back open to the public. And I don't have the exact dates, but I could look them up. But I think, you know, this, this whole pandemic really started to gain steam at the end of February of last year. And I think by, by mid-March, we had an estimate, had ordered that wall. That's, we were really moving on some of that stuff quickly to be able to open City Hall and plan for that. Goal two, support encourage community involvement and a sense of community enhancement. I think the draft vision plan, I was really proud of that vision work. We did that in-house and that's, that's an accumulated process over a number of years. But I think getting that draft plan for people to look at and see visually was, was extremely important. And we've been proceeding. A lot of the elements in the vision plan are already memorialized in the city's codes and in the council goals. So we're, we're proceeding to implement a lot of the things that are within that vision plan. We did, we are doing additional surveys out. We've got some survey software. We're out doing surveys occasionally. Sometimes we get really good feedback and other times we don't. So we'll blast those surveys out just to gauge opinion. The new logo, the new branding, that was part of the vision plan. And actually that was some work that council was interested in doing even before we got that draft vision plan put in place. And we did this year adopt a new logo. And then our new website that we got up and running this year, council approved that in, last year. But I think it was March or April of this year, in the midst of COVID, is when we were working and finalizing that site. And we have seen a large increase in traffic and a decrease necessarily. I don't know if I'd say a decrease, but we are seeing a lot more people are able to find the answers versus on the city hall. They could, they could find a lot of those answers on the website. As far as our community events, you know, we had to respond to COVID this year. And, and we did, it was, we were really primed for some great community events. And a few of those we had to cancel was a little disappointing, but I think we bounced back. And I think the community feedback was really good on what we were able to do in the midst of COVID. And I think we were able to do it in a responsible manner, you know? I don't think we became a hotspot or an infection spot on any of these events. But at the same time, we did get out there and, and continue to do our mission with these events. I thought the corn, converting the, the corn festival to the giveaway program. You know, it wasn't as big as the normal corn festival, but people enjoyed it. It was an enjoyable event. People liked it. Moving the Saturday market down to the park. That was a kind of a brainstorm idea of the event planning committee and some of the staff there. And this year are, we feel like we can move it to an every Saturday during the summer event. And so we're really trying to build up that Saturday market event. And I've already kind of made some pre-discussions with the corn festival board to help man that event for every Saturday. So we don't exhaust staff on overtime or anything like that. And then we continue to encourage business support for these events. And like I say, I think we did that with, there was no tied outbreaks of COVID back to any of our events. Upgrading our technology. I know council was very much entrusted in that and we proceeded per your direction. I think getting the council chambers upgraded regardless, regardless of, regardless of, you know, when we resume those in-person meetings, recording the meetings and posting them to YouTube, getting that YouTube channel up. And our social media presence and interaction, we've really increased that. I've, I've added, I don't constantly stay on social media. Obviously I'm too busy for that. But I have added as one of my daily routines, I do go in and hit a couple of the social media platforms a couple of times a day just to see if there's, you know, anything brewing or anything that I need to address. And, and, and we've doing, we're doing a lot more contacts through social media. Typically they're instant messages. I typically don't post unless it's a general informational message. But I'll, I will, I am people and make the contacts that way and service them that way. We have been able to add some new laptops and some new software subscriptions, which again, help make that user experience better. Exchange club, you know, our service clubs are really struggling this year because they want to get out and do stuff. But they can't have events to raise money and they can't go recruit new members face to face. It's hard to recruit members electronically, but our group is hanging in there. You know, they should be good for the year financially. And I think they're doing a great job and we're going to continue to work with them to leverage that group of volunteers for our events. And then coordinating with the Cascade School District. Madeline was on there. Her and I are now having monthly meetings. I'm excited that she's attending our council meetings regularly. And I just feel like we've got a good connection that had been missing for a long, a long time. And, and we've even talked about expanding our monthly meeting group and bringing other people in that might have input. And so that's, you know, that's, that's going along great. And there we go. And then just some of our tangible improvements, the Main Street First landscaping project, that's completed now. Council's been out there. It looks really good. We've got park down and, you know, landscaping bushes in and I think it's really dressed up that section right there. We did get a grant to help towards the kitchen remodel. It's, it's only a $2,000 grant. And we're probably going to end up doing about a $30,000 remodel in the community center, just to upgrade that kitchen. Some of that stuff probably doesn't necessarily meet code. You know, we've just got a regular stove and stuff in there. So if we, if we increase that or upgrade that kitchen, we might have to put a commercial vent in there. So we'll see how that goes, but certainly just upgrading that, making it more user friendly is going to be a good project. And we do have money in our current budget to help towards that project. It's in the, I think it's in our building upgrade line item. But there were some other things that we wanted to purchase first. So that's probably a project we'll start here pretty shortly. And then our new tiny village project, we, we ran into a little snag with that. I think I can get to that when we get a little further down into those highlights. But there's our events. We did do our virtual tree lighting video, which we're not videographers, but I'm actually kind of proud of it. I, I think the staff did a fantastic job on it. And I think people really liked it. We still did do Santa visits. We had some changes for social distancing. But I went out and participated in, in that for a while with some of our other staff. And everybody was excited and happy and they really enjoyed it. Our holiday lights contest, you know, that's something we kind of thought about the last few years, but you know, never really had time to implement it in the midst of COVID. We added that in, thinking it would be a great way to bring the community together. And I think we had some fantastic participation in that. So we're going to keep that as time goes on. Letters to Santa, again, a little bit of work. I can't remember. Colleen probably knows how many letters we had. I want to say 60 to 80. But Santa's elves helped him get those letters and respond to those letters. Notable, our new website, increased social media presence, and then just what we're doing with disseminating these videos. Our create an environment. This is another one of our goals, to attract, retain and grow businesses. I think it's pretty easy to see that we're doing that. If you just look around Main Street. Updating the development ordinance to streamline, you know, business entry into existing buildings. As long as it's an outright permitted use, we can, we can now put them through a expedited land use process. And honestly, we did a pilot project on this to see how it would work a few years ago. And then council decided to implement that as, as part of their code. And I think that's really assisting. We have been working with representatives from Marion County, the governor's office, our resource solutions teams on paths forward for, you know, anything from utility infrastructure upgrades, which we need to be able to support future businesses to, you know, ways to try to work around some of the barriers out at ID zone. So we continue, continue to do that. Communicating, we're now trying to communicate more with realtors that are, you know, out advertising a lot of these properties. I think what we found is there might've been somewhat of a disconnect between realtors and potential buyers. And so we're really spending some time with realtors now informing them of the city's processes and what can be done and can't be done. And what some of the codes will mean to potential buyers. So we're trying to do that on the front end. Before that, we'd have people that would go and they'd go through the process of actually putting money down on a potential property. And then as they went through the closing process, they'd find out, oh, well, the, I can't use that for my intended purpose. Or, you know, that's a non-conforming use that was in there and we, we can't continue it type thing and do a business. So being able to do that, I think is, is important. We continue to meet with our representatives. I know the mayor's attended several of our state and federal representation meetings to make sure we're on their radar screen. Our tiny business village, this is where I'll get into a little bit more detail. So we, we, we went through that process. We designed the village, put it into the budget, got council to approve that, picked out the site, did all that, went through Marion County, got the permit approved. And actually went down and started to get the foundation work done. And then one of our former staff said, you know, you should check one of these old land and water conservation grants that we received on that park property and make sure there's not a conflict in your project. And it turned out there was a conflict. We started to receive land and water conservation grants back in 1979, I think was the first one we received. And we received five different grants to help with park improvements. And one of the conditions of those grants is you cannot build an enclosed structure in the park. And that was completely took staff aback that that was in there. But there is a workaround and we have been spending the last 30 days or so working with the state parks commission. And they've been helping us lead that effort to get an exemption. So I think there's some red tape. I feel pretty confident that we'll get the exemption. And if not, we'll come back with some alternatives. But we really want to have that tiny business village up and running by, by our Saturday market events. That's really kind of key to some of the plans, future plans. We have to grow that market and be an economic development driver. The good news is under the state's SCORP, which is how the state parks rate their needs assessment. Farmers market and village markets rate really high as an outstanding need to meet. So we've really played on that heavy with our exception application, but that is an update to that. That's, that's what's holding that project up. Had, had it not been for that, my guess is, is that would have been probably framed in by now because we're all ready to go. Nancy. We did facilitate a small business grant program of $50,000 out of some of our COVID relief funds. And, you know, I think that's a great example of the community coming together and support businesses in a time of crisis. And we put that program together on the fly within two weeks of deciding that we wanted to do that program with the, the COVID relief funds. We, we, we had applications, we're awarding money. So we were extremely responsive. We cut out a lot of red tape that people were encountering in, in the, in the state and federal process with our grants. And that, that's a great example of the city responding to the needs of the community.
So here's just
Sorry, Ron. I just, I just want to say a number of our small businesses have reached out to me and, and thanked the city and the council for how quickly we were able to put that together and how easy the process was in comparison to the PPP grants that people were putting in for and everything else. They all greatly appreciated how, how easy we made that process and how quickly we were able to make that happen.
Great, great feedback. Yeah. So I just wanted to go through a couple of examples and just show you some of the downtown rehabilitation projects. Now, I will, I will do these examples again. Once they're fully complete, there's actually more upgrades to most of these examples. But they're, what they've done so far is so impactful to the landscape. I didn't, I don't want to forget what it looked like before and what it looks like today. So, so this was just a quick view of the market now. Hopefully you can see my cursor. The, the market only takes up about this much space. And then the rest of this was storage and now the Umsville hardware store is located there. And this was one of those projects that the updated development ordinance made a very fast process. And we were actually to work, able to work with the owners of the market. And in most cases, I will tell you that we literally kind of hand walked them through the process to the point where even my staff was filling out their applications and, and helping them because we wanted to make the process as easy as possible. And, and that's the look, you know, today. So we've got new landscaping. The market's been painted, you know, one color with a, with an accent color. And then what's not done to the market that needs to be done is where you see my little, hopefully you can see my little cursor along the front of the store here under the windows. They'll have to add that, a solid stone detail that we discussed. Now, I did make one change in our code. It does talk about installing it on the street side. This is actually a private street in here, not a city street. But it really, from an aesthetic standpoint, made more sense to dress up the front of the market. And so that, that's what we did. All new street trees along there. And then there's also street trees in the parking lot that breaks up that visual impact. And so it, I, I think that, I think that market actually looks fantastic in comparison. This was the Chevron station. This actually did go through a planning commission decision because it was a conditional use application. And, and that's what it looks like now and just so much nicer. Now, I will tell you, since this picture And that's what it looks like now and just so much nicer. Now, I will tell you, since this picture uh, was taken, they changed the door to an angled. Automatic door over here. And they still have to put the rock up, um, and it'll have to go up along this corner and down the side of the building. Um, partway and then along the front. So those are two outstanding things that they have to do. Also, they designed this, the Chevron folks designed this uh, to meet the, the Marion County specs, but. They're going to have to redo a little bit of curbing here. That's um, a kind of a barrier for. Vehicles, but just to give you enough.
Tight squeeze getting in and out of there.
It's a little tight squeeze and we can change the curbing and um, pretty easy and, and eliminate that. And so that's what, that's what they're going to do. Uh, this was the old vet clinic that turned into the insurance uh, agency. Um, that's what it looked like before, and that's what it looks like today. Um, now, uh, mirroring, mirroring this, the, the old uh, where the vet's office is now located. Uh, was an old daycare and um, I don't have before pictures of that daycare. I've been trying to get some. Um, I'm sure there's somewhere around. I just haven't located them. Uh, but that is a dramatic uh, change, what we've seen over there as well. Uh, new fields, which was recently done. And you know, I know nobody likes to do any more upgrades than they have to, but I think it was worth the little extra. That they did because it sure looks really uh, nice in comparison. Uh, you can ignore this downs. Railroad crossing sign, somebody hit it and then decided they would leave it there. Um, I think we've since retrieved it. Uh, the dentist office added this piece right here, this addition, and they added all the detail. And upgraded the outside of their building as well. That was earlier in the year. So some of our goal three highlights, obviously updating the ordinance to allow the um, outright permitted. Uh, businesses to go through a type one licensing and permitting process. That, that was a big uh, benefit. Uh, the tiny business uh, village, like, like I say, we've got the form set, we've got conduit. In place for electrical for uh, you know, we're going to run electricity to the building. And then we've sized that panel big enough to handle, you know, like food service trucks out in the parking area. And we've got conduit in place, running out there so that we can put in plugins for. For food trucks and things like that. So we really have plans to leverage this uh, every, every Saturday market. And then our small business um, grant program uh, that we did. I think those are some of the highlights for us. I'll run through this one a little quicker, but you know, it is uh, ensure public safety and, and we did that. We continue to work with our vulnerable population on a. Uh, registry. Um. Uh. Go by that, working with FEMA on grants. Um. Uh, we've been doing that. Uh. Uh, our hazard mitigation uh, plan, which is a FEMA required plan. Uh, we have to update that to show our progress every year. And so that's a, that's a work in progress. Um, because we have to check the boxes on what our plan says we're going to do. And there's actually some fairly significant capital projects embedded in that plan that. Have been identified that need to be done, but um, some of those will come with time and. Um, some of those will have to figure out a way to, to leverage them and get them completed. Um, uh, part of all of that is, is, is providing emergency preparedness information. And we assisted with wildfire uh, evacuations and support. Our police department. Personnel went up and helped secure uh, properties uh, when there was looting going on and, and, and monitor. Who was coming in and who was going out. Um, and we're in the process of trying to get a reimbursement for that labor. It's, we only put in labor. Uh, from FEMA. That's uh, quite an interesting process to go through. Um, it's not a lot of money. It's about six thousand dollars. And honestly, I kind of set on the scale. Whether I wanted to try to recoup it or not, just because of the staff time that's involved, but we decided, we decided that we would do it. And so now we're regretting most of it. We're, we're, we're going to try to recoup that money. Um, uh, continue to utilize our emergency management board. Actually, they haven't really met uh, this year, just due to COVID. I think what's happened is, is the key members of that board have kind of taken it. Um, uh, taken a lot of that workload on. We were right in the middle of updating our emergency uh, plan when COVID hit last March. As a matter of fact. We had to cancel what was a um, regional meeting of cities that um. Marion County Emergency Management was going to have this regional meeting formed. And they were basically going to go through and help write and coordinate the plans, but everybody was going to come into one location. And um, I believe we had to cancel that, I think. Um. But we are working on some se- sections uh, of, of our emergency management plan. And we'll continue to do that. It's kind of funny uh, with COVID as an example. It really isn't being addressed as. Um, an event, an emergency event. It's really being addressed as, as a health crisis. And um, and so because of that, um. You know, we're not able to deploy the types of. Teams and resources the way that we would have if this was an EOC event or coordinated through. Emergency management and time will tell if that was a good thing or a bad thing. I've not been a big fan of it, but we've been dealing with each of those. Uh, changes as they come down and, and responding accordingly. And I would just say that I think, you know, from a safe environment, you know, you got to remember we had COVID. Um, which if we go back to March or April of last year, really nobody knew what we were doing, dealing with. I mean, it was all speculation. Um, based on yeah, what, what we, we may or may not have. Thought we seen or gathered information from other countries. Um, it was very speculative and. And then in the midst of the summer and dealing with that and trying to address some of those issues, we had the whole wildfire. Situation happening up the canyon. And we had staff that their, their homes were. Um, you know, in the middle of the path of, of those fires. And so. But we also had to respond to those. And I think of what we went through and how quickly we responded. By the second week of March, we already had COVID policies adopted um, citywide. Uh, we already had an action plan. I mean, within, within a week or two. Um, of that kind of ramping up on a national scale. Um, the city was in a really good place. And it was kind of funny because. I think it was in late November, early December, OSHA came out with their draft. Um, operation rules. And if you went through our policies, we literally tweaked one or two lines. In our policies to, to meet what. What OSHA came up with, you know, nine months later. Um, and how we should operate. So there's our highlights. Um, I'm not gonna, I kind of already hit those, so. I won't go through the, through those too extensively. I have notes. Um, but yeah, we did have an evacuation of plan if the fires um, had spread or, or we started to have issues in the city. Um. Again, just the channels of communication. Uh, I think you find that out when you do an assessment of any emergency event. Channels of communication is always the areas that you end up seeing as your weak spot. And um, this was, the, the fires were no exception. Uh, there, there was a lot of breakdowns in chain of command and channels of communication. A- as that was heating up and affecting so many communities. And we found. Uh, you know, people are very savvy for information and we found a lot of people going out, looking at various sites and then repeating. The information that they had found on our social media pages. Um, and that information was in, in, in a lot of cases, not correct. So we were spending. A tremendous amount of time communicating with the council. Uh, communicating between our internal staff, communicating with emergency, Marion County Emergency uh, Management. Um, and the other cities up the canyon and then trying to provide. Um, information from the city that was verified and. Um, some panic started to set in a little bit and we, we tried to tap that down really quickly. Uh, because you know, I mean, look at the picture. It was. Uh, day turned to night and a lot of cases, you know, people couldn't breathe. It was, it was not a fun event. I can only imagine what it was like in Detroit and. Uh, Gates and some of those other cities. It was just a terrible event to go through. All right, um, we do have a location, um, where we're mailing out water bills now with return envelopes. Now we can put. Um, messages on those. We're all also direct mailing our newsletters. So they're not sitting in driveways. That was a change. Uh, we made last year and, and it's been a very positive one. I, we have not received one complaint. Um, that I know of. Um, at least it's not gotten to my level. Uh, about our newsletters. Uh, and so that's, that's been great. And we've actually had quite a few people compliment that they enjoy getting them in the mail. You know, they're, they're not in the street, so. Um. Updated our city fee schedule. Uh, we did that last year. Now that we've implemented some of the new um. Changes to our ordinances, we'll go back and, and reevaluate some of those. And uh, every year we should at least look at our fee schedule. Uh, to make sure we don't need to make any changes. Um. Revised leases to make sure the city benefits is needed. Uh, ba- basically what that means is uh, we're not giving a lot of these leaseholders an inch. Uh, they've really been pushing. That's been. Consuming a lot of time, but um, uh, we, we basically are into a. A policy on that. Now, now before it was kind of wishy washy if, if you know. What we wanted to do because we didn't really know what the. Benefits or repercussions of taking a stand would be, but we ended up setting a policy and it's been good. Current city financials are stable. We'll go over those at the very end, uh, just a little bit. I'll hit some of the highlights, but. Uh, city finances are looking good. Um, they're, we're not. We're not overfunded, meaning uh, you know, we can't do all the things that we need to do. And you know, we don't have money coming out. Um. You know, our wallets or anything, but we're not in a position where. We have to worry about cutting services or not being able to respond to a community in need if we needed to. And you know, we, we've been able to absorb a lot of the fees related to COVID. Uh, through our utility accounts that we typically would have those paid by rate pairs. Um, and we've only been able to do that because we've been in a position where we could take a hit. Uh, it's not, uh, you know, we can't take a big hit, but we can take a hit and work ourselves through COVID. Um. Uh, a few years back, we did, the, what allows us to do that is we did analyze our utility rates and, and have a plan moving forward on. Um, uh. Yearly uh, COLI increases, but then also look at how the fund performs and then make adjustments as needed. Um, we did get our ballot box approved. Uh, this is just a picture that we put in place. Um, the weather hasn't been the best to install it, but they have it. They've got a site uh, picked out. Uh, they have a plan. Of where it's going to go, but basically it's going to go right at the end of kind of our drive-through parking area. And we know that was a big thing last year, especially with COVID. Uh, you know, a lot of folks didn't want to necessarily have to come in and drop off a ballot, nor did we want them to. And. Um, and Marion County Elections responded and, and helped us out with that. Uh, we did move investments a few years ago to the highest yield LGIP, which is a, a, basically a consortium of municipalities. Um, that get together and do a pool investment. And um, we were getting a pretty low yield, uh, like maybe. A quarter of what we could have been getting from LGIP. And one of the reasons why we look pretty good and, and have been able to absorb some of this in our accounts is. Um, for about two years, boy, we were just, we were making hay on our investments because of the amount of money that's in LGIP. Um, and it was to the tune of at least ten thousand dollars a month. There were some months where that. Went up to twelve or thirteen thousand. Now, we divide that into each of the funds based on their share of the investment. So it's not like it was ten thousand dollars a month that went just to the general fund that we could take and spend for things. It. Some of it went to utilities and some of it went to STC accounts, system development charge accounts, but. Citywide, that, that's a pretty nice source to have citywide where you're making, you know, a hundred and twenty, a hundred and forty thousand dollars just in interest. Um, that's lower dramatically in just the last few months. Um, obviously because of, you know, what's going on. Um, but um, but we were doing really well there. So we'll continue to look at our investment. Policy and how we manage our, our funds to maximize that yield back to the community. Uh, and then we updated our methods of communication, you know, um, uh, to the, to the city, the, the new website. Um, just all the things that, that we're doing. Um, so on the highlights there, I just said, moving the investments to the high yield accounts, that, that really did give us a financial boost. Um. And updating our methods of communicating, um, you know, we're doing a lot more stuff virtually. We're putting out more education videos. We're actually working on a few of those right now in-house. Uh, just because we now have the equipment. And we're developing kind of the know-how to put those together and, and feel like, you know, it's not a complete. Um. Rec. It's not our field, so it's not always a hundred percent that we feel comfortable doing it, but it's great. And then our website, increased social media presence and the vision plan. I think those. Are kind of highlights for the, the goal. So I just put this up here just because we did it last year and I wanted to give you some reference uh, for comparables. This is just from our audit, our yearly audit. And if you look over here where my cursor is, um, you know, this was your total general fund. Um, operation, which was two point three million dollars back in two thousand seventeen. Um, and then you look at that today, uh, this is twenty twenty year audit. Uh, cash equivalents is, is five point six. Um, and it's not that we all of a sudden have two and a half million dollars. Uh, laying around somewhere. Uh, some of that um, is accumulated in, in restricted funds. And there, some of it is. In cash, but some of it really is just the way, the amount of business that we're doing, you know, the permits. Um, before the city, uh, you know, would average maybe four housing starts a year. And um, I want to say we did. Let's see, we had something like forty to sixty uh, housing starts in one year, but. Progressively, they've been uh, much more. And that business operation. Um, a lot of that is money that goes in and out, but we do get. A percentage of that. And that, that business operation does really increase your bottom line. So. There, there is a lot of benefit to growth. So our total city revenues in that uh, in that fund uh. Uh, with, with all the uh, outstanding was three point two. Seventy-eight percent was for, for charges for service. This was back. In uh, twenty seventeen. And um, and if you look at that, four point four million was tied to that general fund and eighty-one percent. Is from charges for services. Um, and what that does is that provides, it provides us the ability to provide additional services. And those services could be things through. You know, events or i- uh, increased activities in our parks program, um, or, you know, capital projects or just services like. The increased cost of mailing the newsletter direct and, and printing and sending that out, those things. Um, all of those things are services to the community that helps benefit them. And we're leveraging other ways than uh, taxes uh, to be able to do that. Um, also just another note here, our total debt um, was a little over two million dollars at the end of seventeen. And um, we're down to one point seven million dollars in debt. Now, I know one point seven million dollars sounds like a lot of money, but what I would tell you is if you did a debt analysis. Um. This is an extremely low amount of debt for a city like us to have. Um, both cities will have much more debt than that. And I don't like that. I mean, I, we worked every angle we could to pay. Um, debt off wherever we thought we had the ability um, as, as we went through these last few years. So council's going to hear about this uh, in much more detail. And I encourage anybody who is part of this meeting that would like to know more about it, to participate. In, in some of our um. Uh, strategic retreat meetings because you'll, you'll, you'll get a, an education on sewer treatment, water treatment, but. Uh, we have some significant challenges and I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this slide because I'm trying to go through this presentation rather quickly, but. I'll go to potable water. You know, I've said this a number of times. We've got, we've got a lot of competing challenges with the infrastructure. I'll go to potable water. You know, I've said this a number of times, we've got, we've got a lot of competing challenges with the infrastructure. And, um, a lot of it seems hon- honestly, um, almost impossible to comprehend sometimes, and so we wind up tuning ourselves out to it. And one of the things I'm here to remind uh, the community and, and our policy board is we really have to start developing a plan uh, and doing something uh, with these projects, because sooner or later uh, the music will stop and when the music stops, there will be um, and a lot of people standing without chairs here. So our elevated water tower, uh, uh, has, um, does not meet seismic codes currently. And we know that, we know it's about 1.2 to 1.7 million dollars to retrofit it. Yeah, it only holds 100,000 gallons of water. Um, and so, you know, we've talked, uh, about ideas on how to address that issue. Um, we've looked at grants over the last three or four years. Um, and I, uh, we've kind of developed a bit of a strategy, but we haven't been able to move that ball forward a little bit. And that's one of the things we'll look at doing in the near future. But, um, one of our suggested strategies is we also have to build a another reservoir, because we have a 1 million gallon tank and we have a 100,000 gallon tank. So you can imagine this elevated tank is, is a minor um, amount of our, uh, overall supply. It's only 10% of our overall supply. Um, and we know that building a, a gra- a new ground tank, that we can build a million and a half gallon tank. Now, a million and a half gallon tank versus 100,000 gallons for the cost of retrofitting this, this tank. So for about 1.5 to 2 million dollars, we can build a ground level reservoir. Um, and we have to have more, uh, storage, uh, water storage. So, um, one of the suggestions that I've said to council is that we, we do another seismic engineering analysis of this tank empty. The tank has value to the city because we do get, um, cellular tower lease uh, revenue from it. And, and largely that's, I think, what funds um, our parks program. And so, you know, it does have value and it, you know, if it's a 300, $400,000 to retrofit it empty, uh, then we can take the savings of that and get us the larger storage tank. So we're kind of trying to address two issues with one solve and and so we'll talk more about that in our retreat sessions on some of those ideas, but it's an issue. The other issue is based on, uh, the basin that we're in, um, our wells, we have five wells and each of them produce less and less each year. Uh, and we, in fact, uh, last year, redrilled uh, this particular well to get a higher yield and it's costly. Uh, that project was all in about $200,000, uh, to get that drill, uh, that well drilled and then, um, you know, uh, put back online. Uh, and it took a little over a year to do that, because you've got to go through a bunch of testing and it's, it's a process. Um, that's not a cost-effective way of addressing, um, those reduction in volume issues. And so we got to think outside the box and more globally about that. One of the reasons council proved that contract with our engineering company to do some water rights analysis and some water supply work, that's laying the foundation for developing a plan forward on how to address, um, some of these issues. Um, we also have to seismic retrofit our, our million gallon tank, uh, our ground level tank. It's just a ring that sits on a concrete. Um, uh, you know, footing. Um, and so it's just a metal ring and it's full of water and it's, it's in place because it's got so much weight to it. Um, but if we had a major seismic event, um, we, we, we could have some issues, uh, with that. So um, you've got those things, you've got your water right, um, issues that we have to deal with. Um, also, and we saw this happen this year during the wildfires, um, uh, the city's ability to pump water without power or when there's a high demand um, in the city is, is, is really stretched. And, and so we want to think about that. Um, one of the things we've had on the list of project is an emergency generator at the million gallon reservoir. This reservoir, the, the advantage to it, it's gravity fed. You know, if you don't have power, you're still going to get um, water out of, out of this reservoir, but we do have an emergency generator, an old one connected to this. Um, but the million gallon reservoir doesn't work like that. It's ground level. And we don't have any way to generate that million gallons. So when the power goes out, let's say the power goes out in the middle of the night, all we have is whatever's sitting in this tank at that particular time. Um, uh, in order to feed the community and, um, our ability to pump uh, into the system, um, is a lower amount than what our city uses in a high uh, use event. And so as an example, wildfires, there was a post on Facebook and everybody was saying, you know, our houses are going to burn down, ash is going to catch your house on fire. Now, that really was not a possibility, uh, the distance that we were um, from, from the Ambers. But the fact of the matter is, a large number of people um, put their sprinklers on their roofs and went to work in Salem. And we had to get on social media and tell the public that this wasn't a threat, that, you know, that we're going to run out of water if you don't shut your sprinklers off. And we saw that draw down. We saw the tanks drawn down um, systematically and, and we were like, uh, you know, this isn't going to work, but we were able to get on the platforms. We're able to talk to people and and proud of this community. They, they responded in kind right away. And, and almost within like 20 minutes of the post, we regained every, you could just see the number completely change. Um, so that was, that was great. Um, but we, we've got some challenges with water. Uh, and then our wastewater and our DEQ enforcement. Now, I will tell you, um, you know, I've dealt with departments of environmental quality many times. I understand the system. I understand what's going on nationally with, uh, how we're reassessing how we look at um, discharge permits. Um, and I, you know, I know we're going through a challenging time and at the end of the day, we will have an answer and we will figure out a way to address that answer, but um, we do have challenges and, and we need to take them seriously now. And I'll tell you why, because we don't know what the end result is and we don't know if it's going to be a $5 million project or a $15 million project. And a lot of that will deter, be determined by the work that we're currently doing, uh, with DEQ to develop a discharge permit. Um, and, um, we've had, uh, some challenges. We've had some bad news and we've had some, some good news, but until the end of the day, until they sign that permit, we will not have a definitive answer. But we know that there's going to be major upgrades to the system and, and they're going to be in the multi-million dollar um, range. And one of the difficulties that we have is we really do not have a large reserve of any type of capital funds. We've got some pockets of money. Um, but really doing a lot of this foundational work that we're doing, we could end up eating up a lot of that money. And the type of work that we're, we need to do with wastewater across the city um, is really significant. Um, just to put it in perspective, there's two issues with wastewater. One is the amount of waste product that's coming in to the system, uh, which is about 400,000 gallons of day. Um, so in of itself, that's not um, a tremendous amount. It's a significant amount. But our system is so open through, uh, stormwater uh, INI, which is leakage into the sewer system from stormwater that last, uh, two weeks ago, we had a steady rain day and we recorded, I think it was 2.8 million gallons. So we had like 2.2 million gallons more enter our treatment facility on that day just because of stormwater. Now, one of the big challenges is going to be building some sort of treatment facility, um, because we know at the end of the day, we're going to have to do some sort of mechanical treatment. We don't know if that'll be minimum or if it'll be a full um, you know, class A type treatment. We don't know until the permit's written. But what I will tell you is we would have to be a city of, you know, 50,000 people to be looking at average daily flows of 3 million gallons a day and, and try to treat that and do it effectively. Um, and so we've got to address the sewer INI as part of that. Now, we have just kind of a rough estimate uh, of somewhere between 1.2 and 1.5 million dollars just to redo the sewer lines along Delmar. That's one street in the city. Um, and, and so we very easily could see, you know, $5 million in INI work in order to be able to have a system that we can operate at the end of the day. So we've got some significant challenges. We can meet those challenges. Um, some of that we will be able to qualify for some grants on, because there are some federal grants that'll help us out with some of that, but it's not, it's not going to be all of that. And so we have to think about from a planning standpoint of how we're going to ramp up um, to some of these capital projects, um, without, you know, just completely alienating our entire community. Um, but we need to start ticking away at them and we need to be able to show some of these state and federal agencies um, that we are ticking away at them. And I'm going to go through a process uh, when we do our, uh, retreat session, um, and I'll touch on that in a second. Um, where I go through each of these issues systematically and I will tell you, I'm ta- taking, I'm taking the explanation of, um, what we need to do, our challenges and how the system operates to a very basic level, so that um, if you're not somebody that knows what INI is or, or knows what a NPN yes, permit is or knows what um, nitrification or denitrification is or ammonia levels or why all of that stuff's important or even how the treatment plant operates, we'll be able to try to communicate that and, um, in a, in a, in an easy to digest form. And we've already started the preparation work for for some of these, um, projects, because, you know, they, they can make your head spin. Um, they really can. Uh, so I just did this thing to sell some of the accumulated accomplishments. That we did, redrilling that well, purchasing the Vactor truck, rebuilding Michael Way. Um, you know, responding to the community with radar signs and rumble strips when we had some speeding issues. You know, sometimes, uh, the, the, oops, the issues that's really important to a community at that moment in time aren't these multi-million dollar issues there. You know, it could be, it could be something as small as rumble strips to try to sell vehicles down in neighborhoods. Um, uh, the MAO DEQ was an important milestone for us, because we, we did not have a permit. We were in non-compliance. And, you know, uh, the, the city could have been looking at daily fines of several thousand dollars and that mitigated that and it bought us time to come up with a plan. And so that was, that was an important milestone. Um, Hiberger Park addition that we did, you know, we built basically another park next to Hiberger and installed uh, or, um, no, that, that one was, uh, an addition down by the basketball carts. Wildwood Park expansion was basically we mirrored that park on the other side, installed bathrooms. Um, all in all, that was a couple hundred thousand dollar project and we were able to do that through leveraged grants and, and, and city funds. Um, that was some of, some of that one-time capital money that I'm, I'm talking about all the time. Um, and I'll explain that in a second. Uh, purchased that 23 acre park. That's something that we'll be talking about. Um, we had no money. We came up with a creative, creative way to purchase that park rather than letting that go to another buyer. It was in our uh, master park plan. We really wanted that park. Um, and we were able to get it for, you know, about half of what it was previously offered to us. So that was a huge milestone for us. Uh, negotiated a donation to Porter Boone, 3.3 acre uh, piece, which I actually just signed the agreement last week to get that property transferred, to hopefully the owner gets that transferred here pretty soon. Um, and getting, you know, getting ourselves up, yeah, equipment, uh, getting everything up to where we could operate in more of a virtual world. There's always resistance to that change and we had a little resistance across across the city from policy down to even staff. Um, but at the end of the day, necessity prevailed and, um, and, and, you know, where I, I think, you know, we're, we're headed in the, in the right direction with that communication channel. A new chairs of pain, um, that's probably not a milestone. Some of our community events, uh, you know, Christmas in the park and uh, superhero carnival, some of those things are, are huge events. I've got great ideas on additional events. We started to ramp that up last year and um, we're working on the foundations for those right now and hopefully 2021 midsummer will be fantastic and everybody will be out enjoying each other's company and the community and and we could start implementing some of those. The new website, uh, and the branding on our logo, those were huge steps that we really needed to take to be able to uh, provide services, at least, um, easier to access services to the community. And we're constantly tweaking the website. We're constantly tweaking information to make it more user-friendly, um, easier to access. Um, we're adding information, uh, we're constantly tweaking that. Well, that'll be a work in progress. We'll continue to do that. All right, um. So we did a LiDAR mapping of the community. This is important. This is, you know, oftentimes you do this work that, um, uh, doesn't seem significant. It lights it on a shelf for a little while, uh, but at some point it comes back. Right now, I think that that LiDAR mapping is, is going to come back to really benefit the city. Basically what that is, is a contour mapping, but what we can assess from that um, are where some of these potential flood areas are uh, in the city. Um, and that can help us in, in a number of ways. It can help with stormwater plans as we move forward. And we were able to do that as, uh, that was done as a region. So we did that kind of across Marion County. Um, and everybody bought into it and paid a little bit towards that effort. Um, uh, you know, reacting to COVID, I, I, I say this to staff all the time. Honestly, um, I think it's amazing, but we were able to do considering what we faced, how we faced it. Um, and, you know, how we were able to respond compared to to other communities. So everything that we accomplished this year, you know, we, we accomplished that in the midst of a worldwide pandemic. You know, in the midst of, uh, two weeks worth of, uh, wildfire devastation, um, and everything else that occurred throughout the year and the limitations on operating. Um, Safe Russel School Grant, that was a big project for us, you know, it kind of sat out there for a while. We got that done. All right, we were able to get a $300,000 grant in partnership with Marion County, Salem Turner and some other cities. Um, and there was a big effort to, um, study stormwater um, in this basin. And again, that will help when we, when we address the stormwater issues. Um, replacing our, our police vehicles and getting all of our technology upgraded. Honestly, I don't know what we would have done um, had COVID hit three years ago. Um, uh, honestly, I think the city might have been paralyzed, because we really had, um, an, uh, an ineffective um, electronic system. I mean, our computers couldn't talk to each other. Our servers were dying constantly. Uh, we just were not wired for uh, new websites or being able to communicate or put stuff out. Uh, it would, it would have been a nightmare. Tree City USA, um, updating the development code, the vision plan. Um, I, I still think that vision plan's going to prove to be one of the most important documents, uh, the city's produced. So. So here's some projects to consider. You know, I talk about, uh, one-time revenues, the way that I try to approach budgeting, um, and you know, it may be a little bit conservative, but, um, there's revenues that come in that will not materialize every year. So, you know, development-related revenues is a prime example. Um, those are revenues that you don't see yearly, like you might see property taxes or, you know. Transportation, fuel taxes or something of that. Nature. You're gonna see that every year and you've got to predict or you kind of know what that looks like. But you don't know from year to year what development's gonna do. And so you gotta be really careful when you go through the budget process. Of. Anticipating some future development and then budgeting according, uh, ongoing expenses according to that. So we try not to do that. One of the reasons we've built up. A little higher than expected in our, uh, general fund balance is because. Um, we don't do that with those one-time revenues. What we do is we let the one-time revenue accumulate. And then we come to council with some of these, um, projects that are community benefit. Projects like the downtown landscaping project, the. Um, you know, the tiny village project, those types of things that might be on one of our goals list. Um, or a need that's been identified and then, and we try to get those done. And identified a few projects that we need to think about. Um, and if, if council's interested, we need to work towards those. So our urban growth boundary expansion, I will go over this one with council because it does have a pretty large. Price tag to it. It's about eighty to a hundred thousand dollars. I put eighty thousand dollars in there as a placeholder. But the reality is, um, we are about built out. We've got a couple of developments in the queue right now. And we're working with those. With tho- those developers, but outside of the interchange development. Area. Um, from a residential standpoint, um, we're, we're fairly built out. And one of the things we're gonna need to do is expand the urban growth boundary because we want to keep, we want to keep the community going forward. Um, again, we don't want to lose that, that revenue that we're using to subsidize a lot of services. Um, and so this, this is a project we need to do. We've kind of been working with the cog. That hasn't been fruitful. They've. They've had some challenges themselves. Over the last couple of years with the loss of their executive director. Um, and some staffing. Changes and things like that. And so we're gonna need to go out and contract. With a company that ha- can help get us there and, and that, that is expensive work. Um, but that also includes bringing our twenty-three acres into the city. Which is part of our plan and part of our goal. So. Um, those are kind of a collective, uh, projects. We'll talk about those more at the retreat. The East Side Park Master Plan, um, what, one of the things we've talked about is. Developing a capital facilities plan just for that park. So we have a park master plan that covers conceptually all of our parks. Um, and, and we've done. You know, the public outreach and the public meetings in past years about what the needs are. And what we should see in those parks. But I think this is an opportunity for us to kind of do a little more of an intensive planning effort. For that east side park. And so we've talked about doing this master capital facilities plan. That's thirty to forty thousand dollars. Um, you know, but we're gonna be looking at more detailed specs of what's gonna be out there, less conceptual. Um, in that effort. Um, entry sign, I only put that on there because it was mentioned a number of times in past years that. You know, there was a plan to do additional entry signs. So I didn't want to lose sight. Of that effort. Um, and that'll, that'll come up in our, our retreat discussions. These are, these are very low. I, I would say in the scheme or in the. Horizon of, of issues that we're gonna tackle. These are, these are kind of low hanging fruit, uh, projects. Uh, dog park, uh, we've had a lot of people interested. I, I've, this has been an ongoing theme that I've heard pretty regularly this year. Um, is to put in a dog park and we actually have a plan. Where we could put in a dog park down at Mill Creek Park, kind of out there where that. Um, where that bark pile was sitting. Most of that's gone now. Um, and, you know, it'd be like fifty by a hundred chain link area with a loading unloading gate. Um, uh, maybe we could do a hundred by a hundred, but somewhere around. Um, ten thousand dollars, we could do that dog park and we could fit that in. It's a subcontracted. You know, we've got a little bit of city staff time to help with that project, but if council wanted to do that project, there's money. We could do a small budget amendment. We can do that project and get it done right away. And then some accessible park, um, equipment upgrades. I'll be honest with you, you know, I always think of ADA accessible. Playground equipment because that was kind of a passion of mine in a, you know, former. Former existence, um. Uh, but I never really thought about full-on. Like wheelchair accessible equipment until the idea was raised. And there's definitely a need and there's definitely a, um. Uh, a loss of that equipment type of equipment in the community. So. We could probably address that issue. Uh, through some of these one-time dollars and it's not a lot of money. Uh, you know, I put eight to ten thousand dollars. We. We could do, uh, a swing like this probably for. Um, you know, the eight thousand dollar range pretty easy. So. I wanted to throw some of these projects out there. The public workshop building, we met on this last year and we had some rough numbers that we put together, which was around four hundred thousand dollars. Um, I, I have to tell you, you know, sometimes you just, you feel like you want to do a reset. Uh, and just kind of start with a clean slate, but unfortunately that's too costly for the city. Um, but we do need to get some sort of large warehouse. Building to house our equipment, uh. And as an example, we bought the factor truck. Now we bought a used truck for around eighty thousand dollars. New, these are four hundred thousand dollars. And, um. Uh, we've already done about six or seven thousand dollars with the repairs on that truck because. Um, the, the vector trucks have a lot of pumps and hoses and. Different things like that and they don't react well to changing temperatures. Hot weather is bad for them, cold weather is bad for them, you know, being in the sun. Um, is bad for a lot of the fittings and things of that nature and. Um, and we've got a lot of equipment like that. We've got a lot of equipment that is either under partial lean-to type shelters. Um, and, um, and I've shown council pictures of these. Um, I really think this is one of the things, um, I mean, we've got a lot of priority projects, but this is one that's on my list. Of priority projects, um. We've done some engineering specs of the buildings and. Of course, you know, cities, we have to go through a process, right? Uh, you have to have an engineer record. They have to be part of the project. It has to go out for, uh, a bid using. Um, engineer specs and we're, you know, if we could just go buy a building and hire a contractor. And kind of do that piecemeal, we could do it much less expensive. Um, but unfortunately contracting laws don't allow us to do that. So the cost of that building is, is higher than we anticipated. We, our engineer estimates are one point two million dollars, but we do need to think about that. We need to try to figure out a way. Uh, to, to get that, that needs to be a goal of the city. So those are, uh, those are some things for you guys to consider. Um, I know I've talked to the mayor about a few of these. He'd like to just check a couple of these off. Uh, council can discuss that at a later, at a later time or later today or tonight, if you'd like. It's up to you. Um. So cumulative, I've given you guys a lot of information. I think the message to take away from this presentation is. Uh, you know, the city had some challenges this year with this pandemic. Uh, with supporting our community, with supporting our businesses. Uh, being able to continue to provide service and move our goals forward. And I think we met those challenges. Um, I'm, I'm pretty proud of the work we, we did this year. Um. Uh, we do face some major water and wastewater infrastructure needs as you saw. Um, you know, there's no sense in simplifying that. It's the elephant in the room. Uh, but our financials are stable and they look stable based on our current operations as we move forward. Uh, over the next few years. So, you know, our outlook is good. Um, and that's an important, that's an important anchor for us to be able to address some of these. Issues that we're, we're having to address. Uh, new development is occurring and we need that new development to continue to maintain some of the services that we're augmenting. Um, with that revenue. You know, a lot of the events that we're doing, they, they cost the city considerable money, uh. Uh, different services that we're providing, we're only able to do that because the funds are healthy. And a lot of that is due to, to development. Main streets improving, I gave you some examples, but you know, there's a list much larger than that. If you could start going through and looking at the. The, the buildings, we're really starting to see some identity and. Um, you know, architectural design and, and just upgraded look and fill. And we're seeing a lot of people now wanting, uh, we're getting an, an increased amount of. People inquiring about lots and buildings in town. And so, you know, what happens is, is. When people see investment occurring, they look at that area as a good investment. And I think that's the ball that's kind of started to roll there. Um, and we're starting to see an increase. Eye towards Unzville for folks that might have invested in, you know, Staten or. Or, you know, some other community, um, Unzville's now rising to that level. Um, we've accomplished a lot despite the worldwide pandemic, um, we're able to continue to provide. Uh, critical services to the community and I think of the things we did. Um, we're still, uh, not charging folks, um, credit card fees on their utility payments because we still want to. Try to encourage people to go electronic as much as they can. We're gonna do that through April. We did not disconnect anybody's water throughout the entire year. Uh, now we're going back to disconnections because we've made the bills, the homeowner's responsibility now and we're working with. Those folks and I will say, I, I actually gave the mayor a report on this today. Um, there's, there's only a few accounts. We only have like nine accounts that are. What I would call behind. Um, and more than half of those accounts aren't people that have, that we've identified as having some sort. Of COVID issue, you know, have been, you know, COVID positive or. You know, their work was affected. In fact, this, this community, um. As, you know, they, they took care of themselves. They took care of each other. They really didn't look. To government, uh, much. Now, we were able to step up and help where we could, businesses and. And those folks in need and, and we did pay, uh, you know, we did help. Um, with a number of, uh, folks, uh, throughout the year, get their bills paid, but. Um, for the most part, the community really did not. Take advantage of that, um. A lot of people continued to pay their bills and, and so that, that, that's, uh, you know, that's not a lot of folks and that made it so we were able to. To help out a lot of people and, and I think we adopted some good policies and did the right thing. Um, I really do. So we'll work with those handful of folks to get them. Um, you know, back up to where they, they need to be and, and then we'll be, we'll be good moving forward. So just to look at council retreats, um, I've kind of listed, I brainstormed a number of things in here. Uh, these will be high intense meetings, two to three hours. We'll take breaks, we'll stop the meeting wherever it's convenient in between information. Um, but I have a, a whole list of things that I'm constantly working on and, and I've got some of my support staff working on. Um, you know, the administrative review of the handbook, that's pretty much done. We'll get that out to council. That actually was kind of directed by council two years ago, but because we didn't have a retreat last year, we didn't check that box. Um, but it's done and ready for your approval, um. Uh, our vision plan approval, I think it's time to go ahead and just formally adopt the vision plan. We've had very little feedback on the vision plan, but we had great participation. In the meetings and we did not implement anything. It's very high level. There's nothing controversial. In the vision planet. We took all the things that had continuity throughout. All of our discussions and, and that's what we move forward with. Um, any council initiatives, obviously, we always want to make sure that councils had an opportunity to discuss things that are important to them. We'll make sure there's time scheduled for that. Uh, review of the city goals. I feel the city goals are, are high level enough that we can pretty much put stuff in all those, but. You know, some of those objectives, if you guys have more detailed objectives or you want to tweak the goals. Uh, we can review them, but that, that'll be up to you how much time we spend on that. Um, one of the things that, uh, we're gonna have to look at is really the ci- city's debt policy. Cause I think at some point we need to think about taking on a loan. Um. Uh, to, to start checking the box and, and accomplishing some of these, uh, major projects. Um. You know, we gotta kind of start somewhere, so. I, I really think that's a discussion we really need to have before we can get too far. Um, into the process and my, what my plan is, is to go through. All of these things to develop that strategic plan. Not, I'm not gonna do a balance the checkbook. So I'm not gonna say, okay, we agreed to this. It's X number of dollars. Set that money aside. I'm not, I'm not gonna do it that way. What we'll do is we'll go through. We'll go through all of, all of these items, we'll develop a plan irreg- irregardless of. Cost on what we need to do. And then we'll come back and balance the checkbook and we'll come back and tell you, okay, now we need, we do this or we do that. Or we do this or we do that. Um, you know, it will be that kind of a thing and we'll do that at kind of the very end. At, at least that's my plan moving forward. Uh, econ- economic development downtown, uh, one of the things, you know, I know we've heard from some of the landowners with the ID. Uh, zone, some of that isn't in our control. Uh, some of it might be in our control, um. Uh, there are a couple of things that Ken mentioned that I, I think we could do. I, I think. It, it's gonna be, it's gonna be kind of a struggle to do them, but I think there's a few things we can do. There are options, they're not optimal options, uh, infrastructure has to be put in. We can't subsidize that. Um, and we can't put that off to the rest of the community, you know, uh, if we don't require new development. Uh, to put in some of the stuff, uh, then at some point we're back to where we are right now and that is. Um, having to try to figure out a way to get the rest of the community to be burdened with some of this. We're better off for that. Area not to develop, even though we really, really long-term plan is to get that developed. We're better off to look for barriers that we can reasonably remove. Um, and not take unreasonable. Um. Steps, because if we do that, all we're doing is pushing that responsibility off on the rest of the community, which. As you can see, they've, they've got enough burden right now to deal with. Um. Industrial U G B expansion and barriers to development, um, you know, we can talk about some ways that the city could help out. I've got a few ideas. Uh, on how to remove those barriers and I'll give you some options of things I. I, I don't support, but just. When we go through that process, I want council to know that we've talked about all these things. Um, uh, irrespective of, of, of if I think they're good ideas or not, um, you know, I think we brainstormed them all. Uh, and then, and then, and then decide what's the best course of action. Uh, visioning, you know, in our visioning, visioning plan, we had a community arts project. I want to talk about how to get that up and running. I'm, I'm really. Um, I think, I think getting an arts program in the community, whether that's. You know, visual art that's throughout the city or. Um, you know, it's something we implement as part of, you know, new development. Uh, I, I think that that's, it's a very easy thing to do, um, and it supports what the community said. Will help provide some identity and character, um, and will help with branding. So. Uh, entry signs, I just threw that in there, um. Our new park development, um, I'm sure that there's other things I haven't added on this list, but I just wanted to give you a preview of some of those things. Uh, water, one of the things as I'm going through this process, um. There's a couple of things that I, I'm finding, um, one is some of our, some of our capital facilities plans are. Are a little old. Our water capital facility plan, um, is our most recent one. We updated that in two thousand fifteen and the plans are usually good. For, for ten years. So I feel like our, our water capital facilities plan is. Is okay, um, the priorities in the plan, um. Have changed. Uh, and they've changed because the communities evolved, evolved and things have become. Um, more urgent, uh, you know, the emergency generator to me. Is absolutely the most critical piece of infrastructure. Um, that we need right now. And so that, that needs to rise to the number one. Uh, project because. Uh, we have one point one million gallons, but we can only. We can only pump a hundred thousand gallons if the power goes out and that's, that's, that's not good. Um, so we've got to figure that out. Water rights work, ongoing maintenance issues, councils hurt all these. We've got. We've got to recote the inside of that million gallon reservoir. We did, councils kind of moved that as a project to. Uh, to try to fund and move forward. Um, a couple of years ago and we did an assessment and. Um, our engineers really don't think we can keep up with the demand with that million gallon reservoir offline, which means. We really can't safely do that maintenance until we have another reservoir. Um. And, and so that's something that we've got to look at. Um, one of the things I've got our engineers doing. Um, one of the things I've got our engineers doing is I've got them doing a, a well survey of wells out um around the community, uh, private wells that are around the community. And I've got them doing that because I want to find out if there's any production spots out there. A lot of our wells produce, you know, under a hundred gallons a minute. Um, I think our largest well was producing a little over three hundred, three hundred and fifty gallons a minute at its heyday. But most of our wells are going around a hundred gallons or a hundred and fifty gallons a minute. And um, that's not a lot. If we could find some area of production wells that might be in pockets that are doing higher yields, three, four, five hundred gallons a minute, we, we want to try to site in those areas. Excuse me. Uh, sewer facility plan, you know, we're in the middle of that through the uh, um, uh MOA, but nineteen ninety-nine. That's twenty-two years ago. Um, now we did have a little technical update, I think in, I want to say in, maybe two thousand and five or six, uh, I'd have to look, but we did have a technical update, but it wasn't a, well, it was just basically re-updating some cost allocations and things of that nature. Uh, stormwater capital facilities plan, our stormwater um plan, the last time we did that was in two thousand. Uh, and lots changed twenty years. Uh, we currently don't have a stormwater utility. Uh, council's been talking for years that we need to actually implement a stormwater utility. Um, I, that we, that's critical work uh and be, and mainly because of this I and I. What I and I is, is so we, we are in an area where you have, you have your sewer pipes throughout the city and the sewer pipes are fit together um with a rubber seal. Uh, that's how those old pipes go together. And what happens is, is they're three feet down. And as you know, throughout our city, in a lot of places, we get water at surface level, right? But oftentimes it's just below surface level. And so what you get is you get this pressure of water pushing down on the, the pipes. And what it does is the pressure gets so high, uh, water gets forced into those seals through these high rain events. Um, especially if you get three, four days of rain at any particular time. And that causes a lot of that water uh to get into the sewer system. And then it goes to, um, you know, the, the, the treatment facility. Now there's other issues that are, you know, broken lines, broken pipes, um seals that need to be resealed, things like that, manholes that are leaking. Um, and you can get a lot of water in through those. And I will tell you that our, our public work staff has been identifying those. They've been analyzing the system. Um, they've been, you know, we've, we've got a project right now where we're sending video cameras down through the pipes to look at the conditions. Because we're in a, in an attempt to identify where the worst areas of infiltration are coming from. Um, and, and, and we're going to need to address that uh because we're going to really struggle with uh maintaining our permit into any type of mechanical treatment process. If we can't um control the flow of water coming into your plant. And, and you'll, you'll learn more about that when we, when we go into the retreat. Cause I'll talk um in more detail about um the sewer treatment process. But just know that every process that we do uh tries to create a balanced ecosystem. Whether it's, it's natural or mechanical, they're all creating some sort of targeted ecosystem or process. And anytime that you get something that enters that system, um, that isn't the normal operations, it throws everything out of whack. Um, and so again, we'll talk about that in more detail at the retreat. But just know that we've got multiple layers of issues and addressing one of them will not fix the problem. We've got to address them across the spectrum um of, of, of issues. Now, what I will say is we're in a great spot to start addressing these issues with minimum impact um to the community. And the reason we are is because of the way we budgeted. Uh, we've got some money saved in our capital funds um uh to address some of this infrastructure. Uh, we've got money in our system development charge funds. Um, now those, those funds can only pay for growth-related um capital projects, but there are some growth-related capital projects that we're dealing with. Um, all the facility plans are growth-related capital projects. So a good share of those can be paid for and updated through that process. Um, but we do have, we do have some money. So we're going to be able to buy down some of this burden right off the bat. The other thing is we've been implementing a plan um uh to fund those capital funds. We can now, we can now look to take that same amount of money that we're using to fund the capital fund and see how much debt we can get with that. And so what that does is it, it allows us to do a bunch of these projects through, through loans. Um, but without any increases in rates. And that's really was the significant factor um for council in the past is, is we wanted to do, what can we do without raising rates? Well, now we're in a position, back then we weren't in a position to do anything without raising rates. But now we've got ourselves financially stable. Um, and we've already built in a little bit of capacity to buy some debt. Um, and so a lot of it we can do without an impact um to the current rates. Uh, street capital facilities plan two thousand and ten. Um, we'll talk about some of those, but I'm still convinced getting the Delmar intersection uh there at first will help that interchange development zone. Eighth Street, um, you know, it's in disrepair. Um, it's a street we have to think about. It doesn't really qualify very well for grants because um, you know, it's not a high-traffic street, it's residential. Um, but we're, we, we're trying to get grants for it. And then the Delmar extension, uh, I think that's, I think that's a very doable project for the city. Um, you know, the, there may be some development that occurs around it that will, will actually end up even doing that project for us. But whether that's partially city-funded or it's full development-driven, I see our Dela- uh, Delmar extension project happening in the next two to three years at most. Um, maybe sooner, uh, actually. Um, I mean, that, s- any development could trigger that. And so that could even, that could even occur in the next year. So I'm excited about that. That's going to be a big change for this community where we see, you know, tr- traffic patterns that, you know, don't go all the way around Main Street if they're just going into a residential area on Eleventh or something. Uh, public works infrastructure, again, there's a number of things down there. We really have to take a strategic approach. We don't want to continue to piecemeal what's happening with public works. It's, it's so important to everything that we're doing with water, wastewater, stormwater. Um, I'm convinced that um we really have to take a hard look at um the limited amount of property that we have uh owned by the city down there that's usable. There's a lot of property down there, but a lot of it's wetlands or ponds or things like that. Um, there's a very limited amount of property down there that, that we can actually build on. And we need to plan that accordingly and make sure we're getting the maximum out of it. So that's my presentation. I tried to run through this quicker. I, uh, oh, well, maybe twenty minutes shy of my normal state of the city, but I'm happy to answer.
For you, it was good, Ron.
Happy to, happy to answer any questions if you have it uh regarding the state of the city or the retreat or.
Are we going to just uh send out one of those little survey monkey things about the follow-on dates for the retreat stuff?
Uh, yeah, I think we said uh starting, starting the second Tuesday, everybody kind of agreed the second, uh, the Tuesdays are good. So I think we're going to start the second Tuesday in February, just because I still need a little bit of time to start putting stuff together. So we.
Yeah.
Those are going to be in the evening, right, Ron?
Yeah, we're, I think we, did we say six o'clock? I think we're going to start them at six.
Yeah.
Yay.
Yes.
Um.
It's like a, it's like a twelve-hour day on virtual media for me.
And I'm going to try to keep them to two to three hours. I won't let them go beyond three hours because, you know, I mean, with me talking, I can eat up two hours pretty quick. But um still, virtual meetings that last longer than three hours, it's really hard to focus. And we want to, we want to make sure we're fresh and ready to go.
So with, with some of that stuff that you brought up, Ron, as, as low-hanging fruit, um, I think, you know, maybe if we can get the, the north-south from, from the council right now, maybe we could start moving forward on a couple of those things. Um, I know the, the dog park and ADA swings have been a, a big deal that, that people have been talking about quite a bit. Um, and then I would, I would like to see if we can get the, the yes or no from the council to kind of start pursuing that, uh, the master plan for the east side park if possible. Does any, anybody on council have any issues with any of those three items if we start moving forward on those?
No.
I don't.
Uh, I think it's a great idea.
Yeah. Do you want us to do an actual motion, Ron, or, or is the head nod good enough?
No, what I'll, what I'll do uh based on what council's saying is I will go ahead and, and actually put together a detailed plan for, we'll, we'll actually price out specific, uh, you know, the area that we're going to do and what the plan is. And I'll bring that, I'll get an estimate, I'll bring that back forward to council. Um, and then we'll just approve it. We'll approve each of those that way.
Okay.
Um, and then the, uh, the park master plan, um, that's something we'll have to go out and do. Um, we'll have to do an uh RFP for, so.
Yeah.
I can work on that. Um, there is, there is money because I was actually going to talk to council more detail about this. We, when we did the purchase of the park, uh, we put specific language in there to turn over system development charges as they came into the city. But it was as of that day. And we had about eighty thousand dollars in the fund. We actually had like maybe a hundred and twenty thousand dollars or something like that in the fund. But I kept about eighty thousand dollars of that back because we put specific language in there so we could keep some back for two purposes. One, to help with the UGB expansion because we got to get the park in the city to be able to do anything to it. Um, and then the second was to do this master plan because I knew council wanted to do that. Now, um, I was going to talk to council in this budget session and give you the options to use that to pave towards principal um or to use it for these reserve purposes that I kind of had in mind. Um, and we can talk about that a little bit in the retreat, but it is budgeted to spend. And you certainly could spend it on those two purposes and it'd be a way to accomplish those goals.
Yeah, and, and I think we can go more in, in depth on, on how we, you know, specifically go about these things at the retreat. I just wanted to make sure that we gave you the go-ahead to, you know, start making some headway on these items before the retreat.
I'll get some bids and I think we can do them. I think we can do them pretty quickly. Next, next couple of months, we can knock those out.
And then uh specifically with the uh, the stormwater and the sewer plan, both of those being pretty old. I know you and I had discussed it. Uh, we'll probably discuss it more at the retreat. But I mean, like I said on, on, on our call, you know, those, both of those being over twenty years old is uh slightly scary. So I, I think we definitely need to, need to get that fixed as soon as possible. Um, did anybody else have any, any questions, comments or concerns for Ron about his presentation?
Since I've got your attention, council, one just final point that I'll throw out. I just hit some of the highlights from our budget. Uh, council had in their packet this year-to-date expenditure report. This was one of the things I committed to do uh for the city so that we could all be on the same page with finances as, as we go. Uh, and, and we developed this sheet that has benchmarks. And so we, we did this as of uh the end of December, so we closed out December. And fifty percent was our benchmark. In general fund, you can see our revenues are about eighty percent. Um, now, some of that will catch up too because we got more property tax um and then anticipated. And so we'll start to see that eighty-seven, that the difference between fifty and eighty-seven. Um, you know, that thirty-seven percent, we'll start to see that gap close as we get towards the end of the fiscal year. But the reality is um we're going to be much higher than anticipated. And so that's why I say I, I think we can easily do some of these small projects like the dog park. And if you look at our overall expenditures, um, uh, some of those are upfront expenditures. So a lot of the line items are, are at a hundred percent or close to a hundred percent. But overall, our overall spent expenditures are, are still um like at twenty-four percent in the general fund. So that's one of the things we try to do. And across most of our funds, we're tracking like that. I, I don't see any troubled spots. I think the city's in a really good place uh financially. But feel free to look through that. If you have any specific questions, call, email me at City Hall. Happy to go over those and talk to you about any of them.
Uh, before we continue on, uh, we're creeping up on nine o'clock. Does anybody need, need five bathroom break, get up and stretch break, any of that kind of stuff? Or do we want to power through? I'm hearing crickets.
I think I'm good.
Power through.
Yeah, let's just.
Yeah.
Keep her foot on the gas.
So, next item, uh, city council and planning commission joint discussion. Um, I know we've got most of the, the planning commission here. Um, is there anything specific you guys wanted to bring up? I'm going to take that as a no. Uh, was there anything from your side, Ron?
No, I, I'm, I'm really excited about the, the great start we got with the new planning commission. We had a kind of a high-level training um work, work session last week. And we're going to do a number of those before we get our first application in. And um, I think we're going to be great.
Well, alrighty then, uh, we'll keep uh moving on. Uh, is there anything you need to report outside of the uh, the state of the city there, Ron?
No, we're trying to get through COVID. Um, I know that there's a, a lot of folks have been able to get the vaccine through work or through, you know, one, one way or the other. Poor Walter, I tell, they won't give it to me.
Yeah, I'm pretty low on the list, I guess.
Um, and, and so, you know, so, some folks are getting it, some folks aren't. I think, I think we'll, I think we'll start to see uh, a lot more vaccinations and I'm still attending some of those meetings and, you know, they go all over the place. But I just have a feeling that, that, that we'll start to see that. A lot of people don't want the vaccine and, and that's fine too. And so I'm just hopeful that by summer, we could be back to at least some sense of being able to interact face-to-face uh a little bit more normal uh and, and not feel so concerned about, um, you know, contracting some deadly virus.
I mean, with, with as much of a concern as the vaccine was, I am a little bit disappointed in the uh lack of people that are mysteriously developing superpowers. I was really hoping for that, but uh, I don't know, maybe, maybe it'll just take a while. I'll keep my fingers crossed on that one. Um, so.
I get mine tomorrow. I'll let you know what happens.
Yeah, I hope, I mean, hopefully something happens. I didn't buy this little Thor's hammer for no reason. Um. Counselors, anybody have anything to report?
I don't have any updates.
Nothing, nothing from nobody. Um, so for me and my schedule, we all know I'm, I'm gone for, for work quite a bit. Um, I got an email the other day. Uh, the next country I'm going to is Mauritania. Um, that's in West Africa, kind of like Northwest on the, on the Atlantic Ocean there. Um, apparently I will have to quarantine when I get there. So I, I guess I'm leaving March third. And then I get to just go like sit at a hotel or at the embassy or something for two weeks until I get to work. Um, but it's sounding like I will be gone from, I believe it's March third until April second. Um, but much like last time, uh, I should have good internet access the entire time and all that. So, uh, I'll still be participating in all the meetings. Um, and since our retreats are going to be virtual, I'll still, should still be able to participate in those. But uh, obviously we'll have to see how things sit with the schedule and the time change and everything. But uh, that's where I'm sitting at right now. How things sit with the schedule and the time change and everything, but uh, that's where I'm sitting at right now. Um, good to the order, anybody got anything? Alright, well, if uh, nobody has anything to bring up. I have eight fifty four, we can go ahead and uh, adjourn the meeting.